Call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
We approve the agenda.
Second?
Then move to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose name? Motion passes. Next item is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is that what you want?
That's what I asked.
Arms works.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Then move to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose name? Motion passes. Next, is there anybody here that'd like to speak to something that's not on the agenda? All right. Special reports or presentations, Main Street, board.
Good evening, city council members. Thank you so much for allowing me to come this evening and do a brief announcement about Main Street. Very exciting news that I'd like to share with you. And I have the press release that I'd like to read to you. So everyone knows about what's happening on Main Street, Baldwin City. Baldwin City just received the 2022 Main Street America accreditation. It's a pretty big deal and not everybody gets that accreditation. And usually you have to be in the Main Street program for a whole lot longer to get that. And we are newbies and we received it. And I am delighted. And so I'd like to just read the press release this evening at the city council meeting. Just so that it's on record about all the achievements that Main Street is making, which is exciting. Baldwin City Main Street has been designated as an accredited Main Street America program for meeting rigorous performance standards. Each year, Main Street America and its partners announce the list of accredited programs to recognize their exceptional commitment to preservation-based economic development and community revitalization through the Main Street approach. We are extremely proud to recognize this year's nationally accredited Main Street America programs that have worked tirelessly to advance economic vitality and quality of life in their downtowns and commercial districts, said Patrice Frey, the president and CEO of Main Street America. During another incredibly challenging year, these programs demonstrated the power of the Main Street movement to respond to the needs of their communities. I am inspired by this steadfast leadership and innovative solutions to drive essential local recovery efforts, support small businesses, and nurture vibrant downtown districts. The Baldwin City Main Street's performance is annually evaluated by Kansas Main Street, which works in partnership with Main Street America to identify the local programs and meet rigorous national performance standards. Evaluation criteria determines the communities that are building meaningful and sustainable revitalization programs and includes standards such as fostering strong public-private partnerships, supporting small and locally owned businesses, and actively preserving historic places, spaces, and cultural assets. I would just like to take a moment to thank all the community members that are involved in Main Street. There are 55 community members who are sitting on four committees. And all of them are dedicated and they are working hard to make changes in the downtown. It is something very exciting to watch that so many community members care so deeply about their community. And I am just delighted to be a very small part of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Lauren. All right. Next, under Old Business Power Plant Substation. Some new info you'd like to present to the council?
I'm sorry?
You have some new information?
I do, yeah.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I left a package with everybody here today because some of the information, some of you have seen in different committees and some of you have seen none of it. Some of it made it into the council packet. And then some of it has changed in the last few days. So I wanted to do an update on everything I had to this point. To get started with, we've got two reasons for having an announced generation. I'll try to get over this quickly. I know a lot of this has been said, but first one being capacity and the second one being the ability to supply all or some of the power needed if we lose our tie. So on the first subject, the capacity, in 2021, we were long on capacity, about 2 megawatts. After the last week, that has dwindled to about 1 megawatt because last Thursday, we had a peak of just under 10 megawatts, 9.9, a little bit over. So, and we're not even into the school season yet. So I foresee our peak probably being 11, 11 or just under 11 this year when August or September hits and Baker and the school district get back in schools. And we get a hot spell in there. That's normally when we have our peak every year. So the fact that we're a megawatt over what we were this time last year was an eye-opener for me. So. So the second is the ability to restore power if we lose our tie. We're already at a deficit of that. We only have 9 megawatts of generation. Like I said, last Thursday, we had 9.9. So also on May 18th, we had an outage. We lost our tie. Some of you know that we were not able to restore the whole town because we did not have a capacity. And what we did have took a little while to get one of our feeders back on. And that's because we had to fire up the downtown plant and that takes a little bit. Back to what I was talking about earlier, our peak is rapidly climbing the last two years. You know, two months ago, we were questioning whether, you know, we're looking at a high percentage growth every year. But after seeing the last, you know, few weeks, I think it's evident that maybe one of the spreadsheets that I have in there is actually an undershot. I think we're actually going to be climbing quicker than the first spreadsheet. So why now and why these units? So I think the why now, I've already spoken to. The fact that we need them now. Why these units? Like I've said to somebody in the past, I think that this is the best bang for the buck. It's the best year because we believe that we can have these without having to have catalyst added to them. And there's very few years that we have that option. And these happen to fall into what we believe to be one of those years. That's not verified yet. The state of Kansas has to verify that. But we believe by reading through their guidelines that one of these units, that these units will qualify for no catalyst. So the price of the project. I know this is a higher price than I said a week ago. Last Thursday, we were sitting in the Public Utility Committee meeting and I got a text from Foley and the price per unit raised $30,000. It was purely on the cost of the new radiator. The cost of the components went up $30,000. And they also, in their proposal to Foley, stated that if there are any other cost adders, whether it be raw materials or shipping, then over 3%, if they have a larger than 3% addition, then they will pass that on as well. So that got the units at 455,000 each. The install price is approximately 350,000, including install and equipment. And with the need for an addition to the power plant, if we go with the three units, I have that estimated at 450,000. So the total project estimation should not exceed 2.865 million. That has a per kilowatt price of $477 per kilowatt, which is significantly lower than any other option that is available right now. If you guys remember the project that Luke Staley Brain did for us, their Wartzilla came in at $1,400 per kilowatt. So we're looking at, you know, less than a third of that. I do want you to know that I'm exploring other options that lower the per unit cost. One of those, so the 455 is including the catalyst if needed. I want the 455, I want this whole number to be a worst-case scenario. I don't want to come into you later on and say, you know what? We didn't hit it. I want to come in and say that we beat it. You know, we came in under what we were thinking. So the 455 includes the new radiator, new exhaust, and includes a catalyst. So if a catalyst is not needed, that will reduce that number. I'm also exploring options with Foley on whether or not we can purchase the used radiators that came with, that are coming with, that were attached to these units, but they weren't going to sell them because they thought that the cost to remove them would be more expensive than what they're worth. So when we're looking at $85,000 radiator, that may bring up another option of possibly trying to get the radiators that they have right now that they're using on these engines. So we're exploring everything we can to lower the cost on that. The all-in number, I want it to be as high as it will be. I don't want to come in here and say it's more. Also, an expansion of the power plant, two facility, helps out the future of Baldwin City. What we're doing is we're planning for the future. I think we all know at some point in time, the power plant one is going to retire. Whether that's a year or 10 years, I don't know. But eventually that will retire. So we know we're going to want more generation at the newer plant. This facilitates that. What this would do, I put in a rough drawing that I made up today in your packet that then includes just a rough layout of what it could look like with what's there now and what I'm proposing to add on to it. Basically, it'd be adding on a 50 by 80 square to the north of the building. And what that does is it adds in a place for all three of these units and then a place for a future, possibly larger unit if needed in the future. And it also leaves the third space open in the plant that we have now. So that would give us an option of adding two more larger units in the future without having to expand the building. So. Really, that's all I have. I can answer any question, but basically staff's recommendation is that we add all three units and we intend to put them in addition onto the building.
Is there any sales tax on this?
That's a good question that I don't want to answer too.
Sales tax on?
Being with the utility?
Yeah.
It would be a sales tax.
How are you going to answer it?
What was the answer?
Should be. Should be.
It was usually sales tax on the electric side.
Okay. I thought he was asking if when we purchased it, if there's sales tax.
I'm asking for purchase price.
Correct. It usually is.
And if we purchase the engines?
Usually on the electric, there's sales tax.
Even though our sales tax exempt entity?
Your electric, you know, those enterprise ones usually are not.
And what are we saying here, guys?
I'm saying when we purchase the engines, are we as a city charged?
Sales tax.
With the sales tax on that purchase, we are. We can find that out.
We are, you say?
Mostly what they purchase in the electric side.
Have a significant number there.
That was my question.
Generation exempt?
Substation or generator. Is that something you know or? I've seen it both ways.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good question.
I know generation fuel is exempt. I do know that, but I don't know about the generation, the generators themselves.
That could add. That could add a little bit to the cost. Not that I want it to cost anymore. Any chance to figure that out and make it less with more?
Be happy to answer any questions. Anybody have?
Any idea what's causing the spike relative to last year? We need to have some kind of idea, otherwise it's crap shit.
Clinton and I had that conversation a couple times. And his idea and mine also is that there are more people working from home and therefore their air conditioners are probably being set at a lower temperature than they would be if they were working outside the house. And so obviously, you know, most of them will lower them when they come back home. Well, I think that they're actually being staying low throughout the day.
You may comment the school was out, so they're not using as much electricity. Do they not continue to operate their air conditioning systems and stuff at Baker as well as in our own school systems?
They do in some of the buildings, but I think some of the rooms and I think all the dormitories are not running air conditioner at this time, unless they have like a summer camp program in there where they have some students that are staying in the dorms. And then obviously, they'd probably be on then. But if the rooms are empty, to my knowledge, they're not running air conditioners on them.
But you've got a house mother living there or a house mother, or whatever.
I do know we see the peak rise when they return. I mean, it's noticeable.
They're probably running AC, but I bet the lights, since they're not flipping on lights.
That's her garage. It's her garage.
Her garage. Blame her garage. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, do you have an update on the substation side?
Sure.
What's your news?
All right. Well, so I've contacted Luke Staley Brain and the engineers on this project, on the substation project that we started working with back in July of last year. Also have contacted Ruckman's High Voltage Sales on an updated price on the substation. So now this is about, this update is already, you know, the price is already going up again. So it was only good for three weeks and that was in the end of May. So the substation, the skid mount itself has went up $500,000. That's labor, material, and everything else that's involved. The cost of the line, the transmission line to be built is up about $442,000. And that's due to the trying to get material, wire, stuff like that, and all the problems in the world going on. So basically, this project has increased in price about $942,000. As, you know, Jeff is saying, our peak has went up quite a bit. It's at 10. The transformer we have down at the sub is currently rated for 10 MBA. It's 11 with fans. You can push it a little bit more, but you're taking life off of that transformer. We are currently running with the fans right now. If we get over that 10 to 11, and that will have to start generating extra load to keep the load off that transformer so it don't overheat and just eventually not work anymore. So something's going to have to happen here in the future if our load keeps going up. And we do have an agreement with the school district on the electric use. A long time ago, they used to just keep everything at 60 degrees in the buildings during the summer and work. We've got them, so they have decreased that amount. It's like they run at about 75 now in the buildings while they're working in there because they're doing maintenance in the buildings and such. Baker University also, they keep their load down as much as possible. They work really well with us on trying to keep the load down. But they do have a lot of activities going on. They have ministry classes. They have their children classes, football, all that stuff. You know, there's a lot of stuff they have going on at Baker University. So yeah, the air conditioners are going to be on when they're there, but Baker does turn them down when everybody's gone. But they are still on. I mean, they have to leave them on for a little while. But those are the increases that are on the substation. You know, we've done the engineering study. We've got the prices and stuff. Like I said, I'm going to have to, we'll have, I've already looked into trying to get the prices updated because they were only good for three weeks and we got these at the end of May. So they're probably going to continue going up. Just to let you all know.
So.
And sales tax is not included in that price. So, and we do get charged sales tax on the distribution side.
So if we're generating 9.9 megawatts, or I mean, our peak so far this year has been 9.9, right? That's during the summer months?
Yes.
But wouldn't our solar back that off by 800 kilowatts, depending on the cloud cover at that point?
Was that included in solar?
Yes, that's including solar. So you have to hit the sunshine and that will pull down whatever you have on your tie with the transformer.
You're saying it's all one, it's all one number, is that what you're saying?
The peak? Go ahead. I was going to say, our peak is typically 6:00 PM in that range. And normally by then, the solar is starting to start ramping down.
But if it's 9.9 on the substation and our solar is generating 800 kilowatts, then it's actually 9.1 that's pulling through that substation.
Correct.
So this may be a silly question, but I don't care. So this is, these are on mounts now, right? These are on skid mounts?
Yes.
Can you lease one of these puppies, put it right next to our other transfer?
Can you lease one?
Can you lease one? It takes some time until the craziness goes away?
Not that I know of. A lot of, I mean, it's something we can look into, but not too many people lease these out. They got to build them to specific specs to handle your system. So. Evergy does have a skid mount on a trailer in case like a substation goes bad. Some other companies do that too. But. Yeah, but the waiting period on that is a long list. So they do use them for other cities that have issues. They're, you know, and it's kind of a, Evergy's kind of a mess right now to try to get things through.
For sure.
So.
But we want to have a million bucks in how short a time since we last talked about this?
It's been about six months.
How far from actually pulling the trigger on this? And how much is it going to go up now and then? I mean, this is a terrible time to be building a substation.
That's what I'm thinking too.
So why do this lock? This is what?
A terrible time to be building a substation.
I, you know, prices might level off, but I don't ever see them go down, honestly. So this is just what I'm getting from the distributors that we deal with every day.
I don't know, you can say something goes up in value that fast and now it comes back down.
Well, that's just what I'm getting told, so.
Yeah.
No, but that's how, you know.
Well, it goes the other way, Corey.
I think all the economists are pointing that it's not going to with the Fed, right?
The economists didn't point to where it's going now. They didn't point to that to start with.
I think they were kind of forecasting this six months ago. It's scarcity that's causing the price increases, right?
Well, material's getting hard to get to. So I mean, it's, there's a lot of stuff left, you know? There's a lot of boats sitting out there in the ocean that's got a lot of material on it. We've got a lot of public relations issues with China where a lot of our metal comes from. That's a lot of issues.
It's just scarcity. We ain't got it, right? I mean, so, so supply and demand, right now we don't have the supply.
And right now, we're working currently with other cities. You know, much of us that are in charge of the city, you know, electric departments, we work together trying to, if they're short on material, we'll help them out. If we're short on material, they help us out. That's the only thing we can do to get by through this short, strong stuff. But I did, you know, I've kind of seen this coming. So I did order a lot of material for the future, for future projects that we have coming up. So we should be good on a lot of that.
Any other questions for Chris?
You know, if we'd have done the substation 10 years ago, it would have been a lot cheaper, right?
Yes.
So if we do it now, 10 years, it'll probably go, wow, I'm glad we did that.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
That's what everybody thought 10 years ago too.
But we were coming out of a global pandemic two, 10 years ago.
No, but still, I mean, I don't know. I have a hard time saying no to things that are going to keep my lights on.
When we lose the peak?
It's not this, it's when.
Right. I mean, this went up a million dollars in a couple months. What percentage is that? I mean, that is insane. That's insane.
It's, yeah, but we have no control over that.
We do. We can wait.
Down, then it goes up again.
This is, this is a roller coaster. It's got to have a down at some point. That's just massive.
Like buying housing peak, at the peak of the housing market, you know? You can look back and say, yeah, over 10 years, it might have been a good idea, but it would have been much better if we waited a year. So there's these peaks and valleys. You know, with everything else, my concern is with everything else going up, you know? So this assess valuation, I mean, it's just going to be hitting everybody, inflation at the same time.
That's what I'm worried about.
And so we start dumping all this in, it's the citizens, it's just compounding very badly.
I catch it from you and him, that any way this goes, the way it's presented, neither one of you are ready for it, is that right? And what's the other options that you have to offer?
Hold on, don't speak for me on that because I'm just discussing it. I'm just discussing.
I'm not speaking.
You said I made up my mind, I haven't.
I'm speaking to you on it.
Okay. I haven't made up my mind on it yet. I'm not voting anyway or the other. I'm talking this out.
And that's what I'd like to do. I'd like to hear what the other side is that you're thinking about.
I mean, from what I gather, I don't think that anybody, and I'm not speaking for anybody, is against the project. I think it's just a matter of, do we pull the trigger now when obviously we're seeing a rising cost fairly dramatically? Or do we hold off six months and then revisit at that point, three months or whatever? I think that's what I'm hearing. I don't, I don't know.
Okay. It's a stop. Is there something you can do in the interim? I mean, it's like the generation side. Do we have to do it all now? Can we, I think the substation's a little different. We probably can't grow into that, do half now and add to it later. So that's a different situation. But I think where you were going earlier, is there something we can do to reduce the risk of, you know, hurting the transformer we have until, and give it six months?
Well, I mean, we're all, you know, our peak's already hitting 9.9. I don't see that ever going to go down because I don't think people are going to go back to work like they used to. I think a lot of people are going to stay at home. And the heat is just going to keep on coming and it's going to cause problems. But on the generation side also, it's, we're going to get to the point like we did when Evergy dumped everybody, you know, around. We have to make those difficult calls, who gets shut off and left off and who gets power. And that's, we make those calls for you all, but you guys are going to hear about it. So, I mean, just be prepared for that.
I mean, there shouldn't be a policy around that. It shouldn't be your individual decision. I mean, you shouldn't have to make that decision. There should be, you know, if we can't bring everybody online, this is the policy. I'm going to do that.
Well, there's just, there's only certain ways that you can feed the town, certain parts of town. So I mean, we could, can you do rolling brownouts? Yes, you can. It's going to take a long time to do and it's going to take a lot of man hours to do it because you have to go around open switches, close switches, stuff like that, so.
At the, you know, now?
At the point, at the point of purchase and delivery, if it happened tomorrow, next week,
next month, or five months from now, how long is it going to take before those are in operation and we're receiving them that they're from?
All right, so lead times also went up from 48 weeks to 66 weeks. They can get it here installed in 66 weeks. And then you're going to have, then you hook your distribution and your distribution line. So you could get most of your distribution line up, I'd say, once it's here within a year or two, depending on if you hire contractors or if you just work with the crew that we have currently. There's a lot of.
That's a year and three months.
Yeah, because the location that we were choosing, that's if we get the location that we were looking at over by the old motel in that area. Because we have a lot of the distribution is in that, there's four feeders of distribution in that area that can be hooked up relatively quickly. So most of the town can be hooked up. And then when switching, if something happens to the other substation, if you do switching, the line crew goes out and does switching, we can actually bring up the entire town through those other feeders.
But it takes you a year and about a year and three months to do that from the time you receive it?
Yep. It'll take us roughly, it'll take about a year and three, a year and a half, I'm going to say, total to get it online after it's installed.
And this is, and this is with the preparation that you have to make with position? And this is, and this is with the preparation that you have to make with positions to put them in?
Excuse me?
That, that's the generation, I think, of the substation.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I think.
That's right. I don't always make myself clear.
You're fine.
So how is the new developments gonna affect us?
The new developments, they're gonna raise the load. Um, the west feeder will probably take on the part across, it wants the boundary stuff straightened out with Evergy. They'll probably pick up that area. The west feeder is not carrying a lot of load. Um, also the solar's on that feeder specifically. Um, the one out by the John Deere dealership, that's gonna go on the southeast feed, and that's carrying quite a bit right now. So there'll have to be some redistribution once everything's built in and energized. There'll have to be some kind of moving things around on the feeders to kind of balance out the load again. But it will raise it up, yes.
So why were we not able to get the entire city back online in the last drop by Evergy? If we have enough capacity to do that? Was it a timing issue that came back online before we got? So it's just a matter of, it takes us so long. We were in the process of getting everybody online.
There's a thing, you know, when you're trying to get everything online, and then we're trying to run off the new power plant, uh, we had, so you have to take, uh, two guys from the new power plant, put them on the old power plant, um, and then try to get that fired up and get everybody back online. Um, that's more kind of a general-
What's the whole process take though?
It's roughly about, what, an hour to get everything back on?
Yeah, um, we had problems that day, um, with the protective devices and the switches at, at the substation. And we've been working on that. So yes, that outage took a lot longer than it should have. Um, so basically from the time that, that if we're not at the plant, from the time we arrived to the time we, we start bringing circuits on is at least fifteen minutes, because we have to determine what happened. We have to get line crew involved. Excuse me. So at that, at, at that point, your best case scenario is probably forty-five minutes to, 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 uh, bring the whole town back on if you're there, and if you can generate from that building.
And what he says about getting the line crew involved is, we have to drive around and make sure there's no lines down to verify what the problem is. Like you said, that we had the new relays and metering installed, and we've been having some issues with it on the skater side, and, well, we're still working that out. Um, we had a breaker that we turned, it was off. Uh, we turned the reclosure off so he could start generating, and the breaker come on on its own. And so we had to figure out those issues before we get the power back on. And this, yeah, breaker coming on on its own is not cool, especially when you've got people up there working. So.
So to bring on the second plant, which we needed on that day, um, it requires a line crew to go and manually open under tongue switches at sixth and high that isolates plant one from Baker. That is why we were able to restore everything but Baker. Um, so Chris got that done. We fired up the engine, brought it online, and we were able to bring in Southeast, which is, I know where you live and where Glenn lives. And that was our last feeder that we could restore. Um, past that point, engine number five and number six were both down at your plant. Um, one of them had a water pump failure in, in April, and the other one, when we started it up in April for the first run of the season, we had injector issues on it. Uh, we have probably a six month, I'm sorry, sixty day window to get parts for both of those. So that's why the both of those units were down. Now, had we had both of those running, we probably could have restored Baker that day, but they were not. And, and it was poor timing. Uh, there's nothing that we could have been prepared for because we had not run unit number six all winter, because we winterize it. It has a water for, water for its cooling source, so we have to drain it and, and during winter. So it was actually its first run of the year when we had the injector problems, and the water pump started leaking at the same time, of course, on the other one. So we had two units down that, that we had no control over, uh, when they went down or why. So, uh, that's the reason that we were not able to bring back, Baker back on that day. But had we had those two units, that would have been all we could have done. And we were talking May eighteenth.
So that happened pretty early, right? I mean, what time? About around four, four thirty when that went down?
Yes.
What time did we get it restored?
I've got a time sheet back there. I'd be happy to share with you of, of what happened throughout from the time. But, um, Southeast, the last feeder we put on, I'm guessing it was close to ours. And part of that, the majority of that was, well, there's two reasons. All the, all the line crew and power plant were, were gone. It was past working hours. And, uh, the other thing was, we had to start plant two.
We have problems with those breakers.
And the breakers, yes, I'm sorry. Start two.
Are we looking at doing a scheduling thing for, for those crews during the, at least the hot months to, so that people are there when, because if our peak is six and our crews are leaving, I don't know what time you guys-
We leave at two.
Two?
Yes.
So get some more coverage in there to-
So-
To start the process at least until everybody can respond or?
Right. Um, so as far as, I can't answer for Chris's crew, but as far as my crew, uh, we only have one person who can, who can run the units by themselves, and that's myself. Well, probably would need number two, if we could pull him in. Um, my two operators, one's an operator, but he's not good enough to, to do it on his own, to restore power on his own. He's never been involved in that, uh, started up from, from, from a dead. And the other one is brand new. So, um, it would take, you know, two of us being there. And, you know, so let's say we staffed till eight o'clock at P M. Let's say we work, you know, eleven to eight, then what happens in the morning? You know, if we have an outage in the morning, we're in the same boat. So I don't know that there's a perfect answer as to when, you know, we can be staffed. Uh, once we get everybody trained up, you know, we could probably spread that timeout some. But, uh, I think Chris is in the same boat than I am, that, you know, it's a numbers game.
Currently, we have two journeyman linemen and one apprentice. The apprentice is a little less than a year into it. So, uh, his apprenticeship and the, uh, so, and what we do, like today, we move in phases out on High Street, that takes everybody. Um, a lot of that work takes at least three people to do. So, um, we, during the COVID time, we did split up shifts, and we had two people running at night, two people running during the day, kind of keep people separated, plus, you know, um, it just, it did not work very well, because we couldn't get a lot done with that little trip.
Do we have outages in the mornings?
Uh, the one before was in morning, Sunday morning. Um, good, we should do. And that's a Sunday, but.
And that was, that's kind of a freak storm, though. So, um, most of our outages are at night.
Yeah.
Let me ask you this question. We're gonna extend it out, call it more than a day. You know, just, we have enough generation to bring everybody online based on the new peak that you saw. And then from a transmission perspective, do we have enough, you know, so what does that do? Do we have enough transmission, transfer capability, and generation? Getting past all the problems we normally have, getting all of our generation online, can we support the entire community today based on the new peak?
No. We're, we're behind eight ball. We have nine megawatts of, of generation, and our peak was ten last, last week. And from a dead, I tried to explain, but it takes more than your capacity.
Right.
So, I mean, we need eleven and a half probably to bring, to bring back ten from dead.
Solar's not.
Because there's also an inrush. So when everybody, when the power comes on, everybody turns everything on at one time, and everything, you know, it just goes crazy, and the load goes nuts. So, and then we gotta like, we gotta wait for that to back down. And usually it takes about an hour for that to back off.
But hypothetically, if the substation, from what, I'm not, I'm not in your guys' world, so-
Okay.
Trying to figure this out. If the substation is pushing its limits at eleven, let's say, we could bring on an engine to lower that limit to run simultaneously.
Bring down the load of the transformer, yes.
Correct.
And that's what our plan is. It's, it's a policy at eleven megawatts, we start a generator to start bringing that down.
Okay.
But the downside of that is today's fuel costs, we would be producing at a higher cost of overselling. So we'd be losing money for every hour of running.
But also, one unit, one unit could come in and pick it up and make it work so it covers it properly, unless we had one failure. We run in a unit, and then we had another failure, then we'd be right back where we started.
But wouldn't we have that failure either way, whether we're at peak or not?
If you had the failure and you didn't have, you, you got a failure, you got, you got a unit in there, you got one unit in there, and you got it working. And you guys, if you can follow me, please do, because I'm gonna need you.
Well, I think we're-
If you got, if you got another unit in, and you bring it on, and you get it started, and it takes care of everything that, that is over eleven, like you're talking about. And then we have another unit in our system that goes down. Now then, you're still right back to where you was at. If you're, if you're looking at just thinking about purchasing one unit, that may not work. If we're gonna purchase, we need to purchase at least, no less than two.
And I actually agree with that. I, I think, too, I'm, I'm trying to go off of Scott's scenario here, that can we-
Well, there's two, there's two separate problems here. One is peak that the transformer, peak from Evergy that the transformer has to handle. Complete, has the generation not running.
Well, it's peak from the town.
Yeah. The peak, but we're not, we're not generating. The town's demand, generators are off. We have to have the peak demand run through those transformers. And so what you're saying is, we could fire up one generator, then one-
We have.
That's, they're all off right now. You turn on one and reduce the, the effect on, so that, that solves that transformer issue.
Unless, unless-
It doesn't solve separate issue. If we lose the feed, now you got both issues.
Now, then you're gonna, then you're gonna come into one other issue, though, is your breakers are only rated for so many amps. If you get over that amount of amperage on them breakers, and this heat builds up the amperage, then them breakers will fail.
And that's, that's something there that's never been discussed.
Huh?
Where are the breakers?
At the substation.
But do we need the substation if we're generating?
Yes.
Would you?
Yeah, you gotta have breakers. Now, that's something that's never been discussed.
Wait a second. If a generator running takes off stress of the-
All it does is take off stress of the transformer.
Right. Not the substation.
Not the breakers itself that are in the substation.
Right. Okay, got it.
So the breaker's something that's going to have to be replaced when you purchase new units, if you purchase new units?
We will have to, uh, we'll have to buy break, each generator has a breaker.
Right.
So the three generators would need three breakers.
Okay.
And yes, that is included in the, in the three fifty price.
That's in, that's in the cost.
Yeah, and in the substation, the breakers-
But what if?
What if you have-
You buy two generators, can you add breakers to the substation?
Yes.
Until the substation is here, so that it could handle the extra generators?
You can, but it's a very expensive ordeal, and plus, we have to down. It has to come completely offline, and they have to generate the full load off of one breaker down at the sub, which, and, and then, um, then they have to tear the substation apart.
Correct. You wouldn't want to do it in August.
We, we, we've done it once before, and we added breakers to that sub. And-
That's adding more cost to this whole system.
Yeah. It's kind, it's, it's more of a Band-Aid kind of thing.
So you can reuse those on-
It's different switchgear. Can't use it on the, this, the skid mount sub, unless you go to a different kind of sub, the conventional sub.
Chris, let me ask you something about the price of the substation that you just bought. Is that an estimated price or a bid price?
That was the bid price that they gave to us at U of M. That was an updated cost, updated bid cost.
Okay. So that, 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 they've actually bid out the-
Yeah, they bid it to Luke Stanley, right, the engineering company. They bid it to them at, in, uh, July, when we were discussing this at the beginning for the job study. And then they updated that bid. But they said it was only good for three weeks.
So there's a, there's a power, there's a company out there that actually bid on the project?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know what that was.
They actually, uh, in the engineering study, they had a couple that bid on it. This was the chief one.
So what's the total cost of this? Because it's been a while. What's the total cost of the substation now?
Um, so it's gonna be roughly, it's gonna be over four point five million dollars.
I'm not gonna go into this, two million, four to eight, five million.
Excuse me?
No, that's the sub, that's separate.
That's a generation.
That's a generation.
That's, that's a generation. So now we've got four, four, four million, five hundred into it now? More?
Yeah. Four and a half million plus the two point five, you're about seven million for the total project, if you did three generators with the substation. But if you did two generators, you reduce that two point five down by a third.
I hear you.
Scott, finance, weren't, weren't we talking six? Is that what we were talking about, the whole project?
Something came into a discussion.
We talked about bonding altogether. Yeah, and we talked about bonding all together. We talked six million. I thought, for some reason, that's the, that's the number that kept sticking in my head. Maybe I'm-
Yeah, yeah. If that was, yeah, I think that was the total cost.
But we also talked about using reserve to purchase the generators, so to keep them on.
So the reserves, current reserve, to get the, and we've talked about this before, electric fund reserve has an extra one point five million, which would, which would fund two of these generators. We wouldn't have to take any more debt on it. And, you know, as the next, was the, what's the next debt roll off?
Twenty twenty-
For the plant? Yeah. So, so basically, it would be, um, cost avoidance for citizens, right? Because they, they've already paid for it, because it's in the reserve. So, so that would reduce the debt, reduce the cost that we'd have to go, you know, put in the meter fee to get that back if we, we bonded it out. So that was what we discussed.
Wasn't there like a three hundred thousand dollar thing that was going to be off the three, what was it?
That's the original, uh, that's about four to five hundred thousand, I think, for the original-
The debt for the, the new power plant, the power plant two, yeah.
That's coming off in the next few years.
Enter, is that, is that the, so we're back in, in, in time here, whether I was here or whether or not. I remember some kind of a discussion, I believe, that somewhere in the next couple of years, we've got a two million dollar debt that we owe that's gonna be paid off on that building down there?
Yep.
Okay. So we have, we have two, two hundred or two million dollars that's coming back to us, right?
Not coming back.
It's coming back, but we don't have to make that payment.
Right.
But don't, so we got a payment that we don't have to make.
Right. So you have two choices. You continue making that payment and buy something else, or you use your reserve fund and you don't add to the payment.
Reduce your payment amount.
You reduce it.
Hmm? Can't that work in this scenario?
Yeah. Those are the kind of options, I think, and the council will have to decide when we move forward is how we fund it. Now, do we do, do we bond it all out, or do we use some reserve fund for some of it and reduce the amount that we'd have to go increase debt?
You guys have any more questions for Chris?
No, I don't right now, but who knows how much it's worth.
Thanks, Chris. Is there anybody else here that'd like to speak to this agenda item before we have council discussion?
Okay.
But anyway.
Excuse me. Can I ask Ben, talk about a way of financing it? The, the, the two projects?
Yeah, I think that's what we're just getting ready to talk about, what was discussed in finance.
Did you have something to add to that?
I'm sorry.
Did you have something to add to that?
No, I think Ben might.
Ben, you know where a bunch of money's buried somewhere? We got seven million dollars, we just slap down.
Two, five, four, six, four, west, one hundred and forty-eight, Terry, my basement?
I, I prefer the ones in briefcases. It's a nice meeting.
Hundreds easier to copy. Um, yeah, Glenn asked me to, uh, take a look at some stuff this morning. Um- Um, yeah, Glenn asked me to, uh, take a look at some stuff this morning. The GRDA payment's coming off in 2026. That's 320,000. That essentially pays for the generators that I just mentioned.
So that's, that's actually the capacity payment for that's our account.
Yeah, yeah, right.
That's if we add over the capacity to sell it, to have the reserve.
Yeah, right. So that, the drop in that payment would cover debt funding the generators, the way they were described. Not cutting them in half, not just doing two, just doing everything. And that'd be a 10-year note. That could easily be sold locally, uh, under state law. Then you've got an additional, in 2028, you've got another 400,000 coming off of debt, which would pick up the, uh, the station, substation. And there's a way to get to today, to that year, in using some of that 1.5 as interest payments. We'll do interest only and using that, using some of that reserve for interest-only payments until you get to 2026. And then we'll amortize both of these out at probably 15 years. It'll be less than 20 years and it'll be paid off. And that's if you started today, which I would assume construction on the substation is gonna be 12 months.
Construction on it?
Yeah.
Well, it's a skid mount, so it's built in the warehouse and then shipped here, so.
So it's in the middle.
It's roughly three months to get it here, so.
Yeah.
But when's the GRDA?
2026.
This one that drops off? Hypothetically, though, we could buy two, right?
I'm just saying, your worst case scenario, yeah, everything else is below that.
GRDA drops off and then bond it with the third one if we're not allowed the GRDA. But that's part of a bigger discussion.
Get them all at once.
Why?
Why not?
Oh, jeez.
Well, you can ask that on every discussion.
You can ask why, it's time to.
So I can tell you why not, because save the expense to the citizens in paying for it. That's the why not.
We keep missing the affordability piece.
I just, yeah, you know, so, to me, that 1.5 million to get a reserve to where our target is, is, I don't know why we're even discussing. That oughta be where we start. And then these mechanisms to do more is how we would do it. But to protect that, to me, is just, I can't support it. Because we've got too much reserve that's sitting there now.
You're supporting two.
I'm supporting two, which the, the reserve would fund all that at zero incremental cost to the taxpayers. And then we get us, um, 6 megawatts, I think, correct? So 6 megawatts, 4, 4. So 4 megawatts, that would put us 30% over the current peak then, roughly?
Roughly, roughly.
If the current peak's 10% above?
Low, low.
It would, it would get us long until 2026 when we lose those 3 megawatts at, at, on the GRDA contract.
Right, so there'd be a decision down the road. We're not even sure GRDA is going away or is gonna be a bad, I mean, we may still participate, correct? Depending on what the ratings.
I'm looking very positive.
But we don't know. It, it will be an option. We can still participate in that 2026.
Or it could be another power purchase agreement as part of the power pool with-
Most likely, we'll go somewhere, when they're telling us the GRDA, probably it will still be-
But there'll be other options similar to what we're doing here.
But not, I wanna mention this too. If, if we add two instead of three, only adding two eliminates the need for an expansion of that building, correct? That's a huge consideration.
But if you're gonna look at buying another one down the road, while you're expanding the building, make it big enough to put it in there.
I, I guess my only argument to that, Jerry, would you hedge your bet that building costs are going up right now or going down?
Building costs are gonna go down.
Okay, so then if we waited a little bit and we decided to expand that-
You're gonna wait two years now. You're gonna wait at least a half a year, for sure. You can't get it here within next week. You've got three months for it to probably get shipped and get in here. You've got a year and a half or better before it's ever gonna be online. You're looking at two years down the road. That's why what he's saying and what Scott's saying is gonna work for two.
Yeah, I'm not arguing against it. I'm saying the building's expansion would be more expensive now than it would be in six, eight months.
But we're saving money, but we're not buying three.
Why, we're not, so why would we spend it? Why would we expand the building?
It's not a savings, it's just because you didn't spend it.
You're not supposed to be there.
So we, so-
My grandparents.
I mean, I-
Probably will not be your grandparents.
We, we're- We have no problem saying that the building costs of this building is, are gonna go down, but the same doesn't apply for the substation. Raw materials are, are different from lumber and metal than they are from copper and metal. Those are gonna come down, that commodity will come down, but this one won't. Why is time effect one versus the other different?
Are you, are you for two? I mean, he said he was for two.
I'm talking about substation.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
So we're through the substation. You, are you for-
Are we through the sub, do we?
Are you for buying two units?
Um, I mean, we're, again, we're having the discussion point over right now. I don't want to be held with a fire on it, yes or no, um, but I, I, I err towards two, especially since we just were told that the substation went up a million dollars in minutes? That's a concern, and I don't know why that's not a concern for you as well.
It's not.
Why?
It's not a concern.
Why?
Because they've already proven to me that we got the funds to do it, with the funds coming to do it.
They explained it.
Where do you think those funds come from?
We just have to be responsible.
It's still the same thing, I mean-
The funds come from the taxpayers.
That's right, it's still taxpayers' money.
Right, so if you're spending more-
I'm sure the taxpayers will be happy.
Just because you can find a mechanism to pay for it, it's all coming from taxpayers. So if you spend more, they're paying more. It's as simple as that. It really is that simple.
I'm a taxpayer.
I know you are. So, so what I'm looking for is doing, trying not to build so far in the future that the current population's paying for stuff that we may not need for five or six years. We don't even know what the generation's gonna look like necessarily in 2026 with the contracts that are expiring that may be available. So we're making decisions today that are gonna bind us to that. We'll, we'll be stuck in that path. We won't have a choice because we'll already have bought the generators. So I'd rather do what's necessary with some, some headroom that we're comfortable and, and let's see what happens and make those decisions, future councils make those decisions when they, when they come. And we're not asking people to pay for something that we're never gonna use for five or six years.
So, so where you going with this is when you build a building, build for two units? Is that where you do it?
We don't need to build a building if we only get two units. It'll fit in the current building.
Yeah, we got it, yeah.
And then in 2026, if we need to add another one, we'd have to look at building a building.
Yes, Joe.
Can I muddy the waters even more?
No.
If you want to.
For red light, lady.
Seeing, seeing what I'm seeing here, um, Rob and I talked about this last week, um, as far as a third option. Uh, the third option is that we buy the three generators and we stick the third one where the Blackstar generator is currently. It's not ideal, uh, it'd be really tight quarters, but it would fit in there. Uh, and we could move the Blackstar generator to, uh, the wastewater plant. And, uh, cause they're, they have our old army surplus one, so, uh, that's where that generator was actually intended when it was ordered, but it ended up in a power plant because it was needed worse. So, um, maybe that's a compromise.
Does that save us on your production?
So we wouldn't have to build on the building, is that what you're saying?
Yes, so what that does do is takes away all of our extra storage and it would fill our switchgear room and remove every bit of storage we have. So that's the downside of doing that, and it would make working on that unit pretty tight. But it could be done.
Would it be safe?
Yeah, yeah, I consider it safe because-
Yes.
Cause most of the time, you know, we're in there when it's running, but it's not like we're spending, you know, a lot of time in there.
And that's the way of building, 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 building on.
It would not warrant building on, no.
And how much, how much money does that save us?
It would save the, roughly 450 to add on the building.
400, big time.
Yes. And it would give wastewater a, a good Blackstar generator. The thing with these cats is they can become a Blackstar generator. So if we have, and I really don't want just one hooked up for Blackstar, but if we have two available for Blackstar, I'd be in favor of, of removing our small Blackstar generator and moving it to wastewater.
The one that bring it down to is about 6 and a half?
About 2. 2 million? 2.2.
Uh, 805 apiece times three, 2.4.
And how much do we have in our electric reserve?
Those are 2.9.
That really?
So I mean, you throw the one and a half that Scott was talking about at it, you only had 500,000.
Okay, hang on.
Add something to the substation if you have to do both at the same time.
What 1 and 1/2, Scott? I thought you were talking about the 1 and 1/2 out of the reserve.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, if you catch fun of the 1 and 1/2, uh, use that 1 and 1/2 for the, the two or three generators.
Yeah, and, but then the rest-
The rest of it would go into one bond issue for the substation or whatever's left. It, it makes it a lot easier. It's a big get out, obviously, but it, it makes it easier to afford your substation. Interest rates or interest, your interest costs is, what, 8 grand, maybe 100 a year? Same thing's true when you do two.
You have two.
Well, the interest rates aren't gonna come down, so we're looking at that.
There's still two things, Jerry, that I see, and, and you're right, interest rates, one of them. And the other one is, is I'm interested in how much it's gonna cost us on sales tax.
If we had to pay sales taxes, our sales tax rate?
What is it right here, 9 something?
9%. Figure 10 on a conservative number, an extra.
So we're adding 100 or- 200 and some thousand dollars to it?
I would just think we were, we'd be sitting here trying to figure out, based on all these, all these costs that are being added on, what we can get by with, instead of building for 20, 26 and 27. I just can't get my mind around that. We ought to be sitting there, is there a solution where we can add breakers to, to, I mean, we ought to be in the mode of, let's, let's do what's reasonable and smart and not necessarily based on the current environment we're in, build for the next 10 years. Interest rates, all those, I just, I can't support that.
We, we, we have to acknowledge that we're in one of the biggest economic crises of, of the century. Why are we pretending like we're not and like it's just business as usual?
So the, the, the third generator, to me, is just complete luxury. I don't see you using that for years and years and years.
We would, we would go to, into a deficit at the 2% increase in, in whenever our plant one expires. Cause there's, there's six in, in plant two now. If we add another six, which is, is the three units we're talking about, we have 12. If our peak hits 11, then that's our capacity, because we have to have 12% over our peak.
Right.
So we're already at what we have. So if we lose the plant, plant one, at whatever time that is, we're in the hole again.
Yeah, we have to react to that.
Yes.
And we have no idea what really is happening.
It could be next year or it could be 2030 or-
So we either make a plan to, to take it out because we don't wanna risk it, or we wait till it happens and we, we, we react to it.
But I could see us having the same conversation in 2026 when we lose the 3 megawatts of GRDA. And I didn't know, I mean, while we're still paying for this project, are we really gonna wanna talk? Or is the council then gonna wanna talk about adding in 2026?
But based on that, it doesn't sound like the three generators here cover the GRDA.
And isn't there another solar panel thing coming?
You had a question?
Yeah, I'm not understanding your question, I'm sorry.
So you're saying that if we add these three generators, it'll cover the GRDA contract?
We, in 2026, when we lose that three, we're still going to be okay on capacity.
If we add the three?
If we add the three.
Okay, that's where I, I think I got-
If we don't add the three, then we will probably be needing to add capacity in 2026 if we've had issues with any of the units at plant one.
Adding the three generators, not megawatts, adding three gets you plus three?
No.
After, yeah.
Adding three generators gets us to flush plus plant one.
I'm saying, once 2026 comes off, you'll be, you'll be 3 megawatts ahead of your capacity.
If plant one's still in operation.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. So then we save, then we cancel that GRDA contract and we're fine there and we save the 350,000 per year? Is that what we're saying?
Well, it, it would probably be placed, be, be replaced with an energy-only component. We're getting in weeds here, but, um, GRDA, you pay for energy and then you pay for capacity. We're paying a ton on capacity on GRDA. It's eight, you know, we talk about the value being two and a quarter. We're paying them 830 something per KW per month. So their, their capacity part of it is really, really expensive. So that's why none of us think we're probably gonna go back with a project like that. It would be a project that would be more of an energy-only product, which had no capacity. So we would be just buying the energy part of it.
Right.
So in, in that fact, we have to have enough internal capacity, because we're not gonna be paying someone else to have it.
Yeah, super interested in that.
Is there any other way that we can take this? I mean, we've been all the way around it. I think we're about to hit the end of it, aren't we?
I think that's why we're talking.
What'd you say?
I said that's why we're talking, to try to get to the end of it.
Well, I think we should be proactive and not reactive, because-
Well, if we're in reaction to the reaction, then that's what we're gonna do.
I don't think it's bad to plan for the future.
How far out do you wanna go?
I would go as far as we can if we can afford it.
There lies the road. You can see affordability piece. Are we even, do we even know what this is gonna do, you know, to, to the cost of utilities or what we potentially could drop the cost of utilities? So, so we're talking about 7 million dollars, you know, what is that relative to, you know, the rate payers?
Well, if we have money that we can use, and some of the cost is going to be coming off, then we're in the middle, right?
So we have how much in reserves again?
2.9.
2.9 million. How much do we have to keep to keep our credit happy?
Happy, 1.5.
It's 1.5 million. So what is a bond payment, taking the seven, hypothetically, 7 million dollars? What's a 5.5 million dollar market?
Just under 330.
And how much is our current bond payment on our facility now?
Uh, you've got 22 and 23 is 600,000. 24, it drops to half a million. 27, it drops to 150,000.
So 600K right now, today's. So if our bond payment's 300, and then we'd be able to drop the 300 and some thousand dollars in GRDA if we get authorized, right?
Yeah.
So then we're debt positive 600,000, what does that do? Are we able to drop rates then to the community?
That's a big fat question. I'll tell you this, there's a surplus.
Trying to find that. Well, you gotta run the same scenario with only buying two.
Correct.
So what's that look like? Same questions.
On, on three, on three, in three, by 2026, you're, you've got a surplus coming back, given those factors. Your generation, your substation and the GRDA payment. You count all that together, by 2026, you're giving back around 125,000. You get a surplus doing all that. You get a surplus of 125,000. And then, of course, when the generators come off, you've got a surplus around 470,000. That's going way out in the years. But to your point, it's all relative.
That's what?
It's all relative. You'll, you'll, with three generators, you're giving 125,000 back. With two generation, generators, you could conceivably pay the cash for that third one and not bond it at all by 2026 or whenever.
Well, I was gonna ask, we can't give up the GDA without-
I'm sorry?
How would you say it?
We don't even know what else to get available.
Yeah, I know. I'm just, I'm trying to talk every avenue.
125,000.
A year?
Yeah.
I don't know why we're trying to solve the problem, but we need to be forward-looking and do what makes sense. But, you know, there'll be future councils that need, will have these decisions. There'll be a whole new set of issues and, and information that will, they'll make- you know, there'll be future councils that need, will have these decisions. There'll be a whole new set of issues and, and information that will, they'll make a decision on, right? We're, we're basically making it for them. You know, to your point, we can make it, we can load up capacity for the next twenty years. And we would be stuck and, and, and that would be our generation plan, because we've already paid for it. So I, I think it's a balance between being forward looking, being sensitive to affordability of living here, and knowing that, you know, future councils will have decisions to be made, and that's, I'm okay with that.
I'm kind of to, to the point where it, it, it's not going to go through eight grand. It's, that's not going to happen. But the consensus is to go ahead and purchase two.
Is that where you're? We've reached that, but is that where you're at? I don't know. Are you speaking for yourself, or?
But that, that's what I get from the group.
I'm good with two. Um, three, I'm kind of on Scott's side. If we can, you know, figure out the landscape at that point, it might be different. I mean, what if with this economy, we, the housing doesn't grow at the same rate that we projected in here, and we don't need as much energy? I think that's.
Battery technology comes along, we might be able to start using more solar.
More battery power.
More battery. I mean, we're locking ourselves into a, an energy plan, the more generated energy buy.
Well, if we can, if we can do three and not add onto the building, then I would say that's a plus.
It's a plus relative to not building, but it's not a plus compared to.
Two, we have the cash for, three, we don't, right? Basically, so.
So if we get two generators and we bond that with the substation?
We can use cash.
We don't even bond any of the generators. Citizens have already paid for the two. They're, they're paid for.
That's coming out of reserves.
The citizens have paid in the bank, yeah. So there's no incremental cost to the community for adding two generators. Which is to me, I think, a huge plus.
So then we just bond for the substation?
And then that, what we're saying that with the, with the current building dropping off, that bond that got a part of.
In twenty, in twenty twenty-six, when that, when that, when that money becomes available, then they will have the money to, whatever council is, will have the money available at that time to go ahead and add another unit, plus build a, a, a substation, because if we do the two like it's set up to do now, we're going to be way ahead of the game by the time twenty twenty-six comes, and they'll be able to buy another one, maybe at a cheaper cost, and maybe even the construction for the building will be cheaper. So I, I really think that, that, that might be the way, way to do it.
I don't think that the, that the money coming off in twenty twenty-six is just an extra gunny sack of money to go throw more generation. I think that's, you, whatever, whatever more cost of the substation is the, is the difference of what you're already saving on.
We may not even have to do that, for, you, you, you know, when twenty twenty-six comes, we may be to the point where we don't need it, or they don't need it.
We're having two separate conversations in the same conversation. I feel like the generation side needs to maybe be answered separately from the substation side. Cause we keep interchanging them, and I think, maybe we shouldn't. Cause if we could, if we could spend one out of our pocket, citizen's pocket, we already paid for it, two generators, solves a problem, then we can separate the other problem, which is the substation.
Later.
Right. So divvy enough money that's coming off in twenty twenty-six for the generation. I feel like we should be talking like that. If we're buying two. If we're buying two, yeah. All that money that's coming up in twenty twenty-six, we need to be focusing toward the substation conversation, I feel.
That's what we're doing. I thought that's what, did I not say it right?
We were talking about maybe when twenty twenty-six comes off, add a third generation, generator if we need it. I feel like we don't want to speak, we don't want to use that, speak toward that money first, generation. Once we make a generation decision right now, I feel like we put it away, and that future council can decide on that.
So are you saying waiting until twenty-six to do the substation?
No, no, no. I'm saying, when you're forecasting a substation, consider twenty twenty-six coming off as a part of that forecast.
What he, what he's saying is disregard the building of a substation in twenty twenty-six if we need a generator. We need to concentrate on the fact that we need to buy a generator. Is that what you're saying?
No, no. So let's, I mean, I think, let's, low hanging fruit is generation. Am I wrong? Is that, is that where we can do maybe a good starting point? We can solve two generators as low hanging. Huge mess of problems, maybe we can just tackle that one real quick. Okay, generation, if we can solve that out of pocket for one point five, then that solves that. We can maybe stop talking about that and then talk about substation as a whole separate entity, what's left over from twenty twenty-six as we forecast it out.
And twenty twenty-six, when you get reelected, then you can handle it.
His reelection's actually.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, yeah, yeah.
He'll be here. You can handle it, you can handle it then.
I got a busy couple of years ahead of me. I don't know what's going to happen. That's, that's just me kind of, yeah, throwing it to campus there.
I think what he was getting at is there'll be debt payments coming off and the council can decide to do whatever they want. They could buy generators, they could, you know, it's, it's.
They could build a mule barn if they needed it.
Right, sure, sure.
They could bond out for whatever they want, and you use that delta. So I think that's where he was kind of.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, good luck going and finding your, your bond payment for that substation.
Right, well, that would be part of the discussion. Like, are you really, yeah, but, yeah, right, so I think we're.
Yeah.
So we're on the same page now.
Yeah, on the two separate conversations. So I, I, I guess, to me, is, is there any appetite to even explore the, you know, the breaker, um?
So, so separately, the, the concern about the, the increasing cost of this project?
Yeah, are we pulling it over now, or are we trying to figure out?
That's going to be a whole other call.
How to get by?
I cannot imagine if those prices stay the same. I cannot imagine. If you can have some kind of a stopgap, how can you shake your head? I mean, it went up a million dollars in a couple of months. That's insane.
And in a year, it could be up another pot.
It's gonna pop?
That's actually not a couple of months, that's a year. That's from July.
That's still insane. How much, what percentage of the project is that?
Twenty.
Yeah. That's not a, that's not a, a trajectory we can plan on, I don't think.
You're in the industry. What, what do you predict? Do you see these prices coming down, staying the same?
I'd probably see them staying the same more than coming down. The, I mean, with the way things are in this world right now, it's hard to guess.
But when we ask why the prices are going up, the answer's always the supply chain. So if the supply is remedied, and there's no longer scarcity of supply, then why would we expect the prices wouldn't come down?
Well, you got, you got to add in labor too, and, and demand, because the labor is not going to go down. It's going to keep going up. And, yeah, and the demand will also keep going up, but the material, that's just part of it.
But that's the answer we're giving every time. We don't, we don't really talk about labor when we say, why are the prices up? Not blaming you for the prices, by the way.
He's the messenger.
Yeah, see, labor and, uh, materials was only two hundred thousand dollars of dangers. The, I mean, two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred, that's a lot of money to me, I mean, but, uh, uh, unless that's, that two hundred thousand dollars is labor, so. That's just going to keep going up. This is the way the world is right now. Right now, it's, it's, it's an employee market. It's not, it's not really employer market, to speak.
We're a year and a half essentially from the final bond on this, right? I mean, from construction to final bond, we're about a year and a half.
Yeah.
In that year and a half, if it's determined that we need a third generator, can that bond be amended to include a third generator? Prior to the close of the original?
No, that independent bond couldn't be, but it'd be very easy to get a, a second tranche put together. Very, if you needed a third generator, you'd get it in a month. That's easy. That's just, that's just, that's a lease. You do five years, you got it done. We did one of those a month last year.
So it keeps the door open, but we start on our current generation issue now. If we add two generators, do we have the, you guys used switch, the breaker? Do we have the breaker in our current substation to handle that for two years? Cause and then, if you tell me no, now I'm going to go back to, do we need them right now? If our current substation can't handle it right now?
We can blow a chart.
It's actually two different things. Um, so adding generation doesn't really make any effect on the substation, other than.
But I thought, we were told that it needed breakers.
Well, I'm just saying that you got to take that kind of stuff into fact. You're going to need breakers for these, for these generators. Those are going to be needed.
Two generators need breakers.
Yes.
They will be in the power plant.
So back to my original thing then, essentially, if the substation was over capacity, we could flip on two generators and run like that for a while.
And pull that down, yeah.
You can, but you know what? What I would say is you can't do that for a long, you don't want to do that for a long period of time.
Correct, but how long does our peak typically last? Twenty-four hours? Uh, F, not even twenty-four, because in the evening, it's going to go down.
Two, three hours.
Right, but it could be every day.
But it could be multiple days.
Yeah, it could be day on, day on, day, yes.
But it's typically for a short period of time.
Yes, yes, a few hours.
So essentially, we could, let it along, I mean, we're, we're talking thirteen months to get a substation either way, so this conversation has to happen. Because if we can't get a substation, then thirteen months.
No, next summer, we're going to have to deal with it regardless.
Yeah, so, but I think that, right?
Well, so the only time that we'd have an issue, but we can't solve it, is if we lose the feed and we have to supply our own. I mean, we can't use it, there, there are no extra generators. Only maybe there would be one to, you know, to pull down the transformer, you know, issue, right? Cause we're generating our own electricity.
But we don't need the substation.
Yeah, so if we lose, lose the tie, the transformer's offline.
Yeah.
The substation and the transformer are separate. The transformer feeds the substation from our, from our source, which is Evergy.
Okay, but if we lose our tie to Evergy, we just flip on our generators and power the whole community without that substation.
Gotcha, that's what I missed, okay. So.
It's, it's going to get complicated here. Uh, you have the substation, the transformer, and the breakers, okay? In that building, and the breakers are basically like a panel in your house. They separate the load and send it to different places, okay? So when he's generating the whole town, it still feeds through that bus, which heats up the breakers, which distributes to town, okay? So the transformer, if, if, can he generate without the transformer? Yes, but he still has to use that bus and those breakers.
Transformer issue, a breaker issue, and a generation issue.
But wouldn't we have to already add that to that substation? Because if we're adding another one, and one of them's down, we got to be able to run the load through that other substation.
Yeah, each one's got one, right?
Yeah, the, the new one's priced with breakers in.
I think.
And a much larger.
And a much larger transformer.
Still to hear the current one had the breaker capacity to supply the whole town.
The new substation price has the new breakers built into it.
For both substations?
I'm sorry, the new power generators have the breaker cost already built into this cost.
Yes, and by having a second substation, you're splitting half or whatever percentage of load off of the original substation, you're putting it on your new substation, and that pulls down your load on your existing breakers at the substation, and it pulls down the load on the transformer at the existing substation, because this other substation is taking up whatever percentage you switch over to that. So, which only prolongs the life of everything by running it.
So if the transformer on the current substation should go down or become non-functional, then what happens?
We are generating everything.
Okay, forever.
Until it's repaired, or we can get a, a temporary, like we talked about Evergy sometimes, has trailer mounted units available.
But if we had a substation, a second one already, there wouldn't be a problem.
We would be able to use that substation, take that one offline, deal with one offline.
And vice versa.
And vice versa, yes. And also, that's great during maintenance.
So, you know.
As long as we have enough generation of power in the town.
Yep.
Regardless of the substation, we're good, right?
I mean, with the cost of. The cost of generation would be higher.
Yes, yes. Okay, you wouldn't want to do it every day.
Yeah.
Right.
Is there any action the council wants to take on any of this tonight?
Um, well, I'll make a motion. I move that we go ahead and get the two generators and, um, on the, uh, reuse that station.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Pat.
So, clear it up, so. I guess we just need this probably in a minute, because this will be a trigger multiple things. Are you, is your motion to purchase the two substations?
No.
Or, sorry, 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 generators, generators. The two generators with reserve, are you, is your motion to bond it all together? What, what's the financing portion of that?
Well, I thought we had the money for the, for the two.
You can go either way. That's why he's asking the question.
Yeah, we could go either way.
So, to me, I think we need to be clear on what the cost estimated are, funding source for both substation and the generation, and the cost of each. And to me, that would be the two motions or one motion that is clearer about where we're going to get the money into it.
Yeah, that's all. I just wanted some clarity on that funding, because we probably need that, right?
Well, I could, I could offer a, a change to what you're just saying is, offer the amendment, offer the motion for staff to bring back a plan of finance for two generators and a substation. That gives us an ability to put a structure together for the gen, for the substation and give you the cash in lack for the other one. And we could do that next Tuesday at your workshop. Would you bring it back? Then you could, you could, you could approve it in July though, after you see it.
Yeah, we can review it during our meeting.
Yeah, review it and then just approve it in July, if that makes sense. Just ask staff to bring back a plan of finance for what you just said.
Need a motion to do that?
We, we don't need a motion for that, I don't think, but we would need a motion to authorize city staff to negotiate the purchase of the generators, because you got to have that contract, and then we would approve that contract at the next meeting.
You need a motion for what?
To negotiate and.
Can't make another motion. You got one before.
Okay, let's vote on that one. All in favor, say aye.
He brings up a great point.
He does, he does. I don't know, I don't know, okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay, nay.
Motion fails.
What you want?
Fails.
So can we make another motion?
Can, absolutely.
And if you want.
Okay, we're on the same. Okay. So, let me ask you this. So are we going to ask them to come back with information?
No, I would, I would ask, if, if I could make a motion, I'd motion that the staff negotiate and bring forward an agreement, a purchase agreement for the two generators. I would do that as one motion and a financing plan with that contract at the next meeting, and I'd make a second motion, if the council so wishes, to approve, because we don't have completely one hundred percent updated substation numbers, right, Chris? Those were only good for three weeks.
Right.
So we need updated substation numbers, along with a plan of financing. Does that make sense?
Question, do we authorize with a limit?
Uh, we have in the past, yes. But it's just, at any, at any.
Well, if they, if they bring it back.
And we don't like it.
My question, is there a final approval with the?
There is a final.
So we're authorized to negotiate, not to buy?
Correct. They'll bring back a contract, purchase contract, and then if the council binds the city into that purchase contract.
And then you got another motion.
Yep.
Does that make sense?
I do. Um, okay, so I move that we, um, allow the staff to negotiate the price of the two generators and bring back a purchase agreement to the council for our just.
And finance.
And a finance and a plan. Second.
The move to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes, five zero. Motion passes, five zero.
So now.
So now that's a generator, now a substation, yeah.
So now I move that we.
Remember, if this is good, it's enough.
You're going to tell me that, Jerry?
I move that we have the staff, uh, come back with a cost for the generator, or for the substation with a purchase price agreement.
Purchase agreement?
Yeah.
And a financing plan?
And a financing plan.
That's been made. Your second. Move to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Okay, that was number one under old business.
I'm not ready.
Do you need a recess?
Yeah.
You got a move for a recess? You got a move and vote on a recess?
You got a move and vote on a recess?
Yes, yes. You're in a, yes.
Correct. Well, I'll just go to the bathroom without making a motion.
All right, well, let's get the next four. I mean.
All right.
Turn out the lights on.
It's over there.
It's straight ahead.
The hallway.
Straight ahead.
Down the.
Glenn, you want to go over the brick street resolution?
Good, yeah.
Jeez. I get to follow the electric stuff.
Oh, man. All right, we have a plan. Uh, we've talked about the brick streets, uh, since about nineteen, well, almost as long as we've talked about generation and the substation, it feels like, but not quite as long. Proposal in front of you is actually put a resolution with, it's actually a resolution to put a sales tax on the ballot in November, uh, being for the general election. It would be raising our sales tax from the current one point two five to one point seven five, so it'd be fifty cents dedicated to the, uh, Brick Street Plan that we talked about during the strategic planning. And, and subsequent to that, we've had a lot of discussion about the Brick Streets. Um, and of course, along with that, we'd be looking at different types of grants. There's lots going on out there right now. The most obvious one is KDOT's, um, TA Grants, which we've been very successful in getting that for trails. And the next obvious project is the Brick Streets. And we had an estimate for how much the, uh, you know, the half cent would bring in. Um, and again, these are estimates. Our sales tax has done very well through the pandemic. We actually did, uh, saw, you know, four or five, sometimes six percent increase in our sales tax per year, um, probably due to the fact a lot of people are shopping here at home and there's a lot of home delivery. So we do get the sales tax when that comes here. So whether you do that or, or, um, shop here locally, we do benefit the sales tax for that. So anyway, this would be a tax that's just dedicated to construction of the Brick Streets. And, um, we got to start somewhere. So we did have that plan, which I think included like fourteen blocks or whatever it was, that we start and we want to preserve the downtown, of course, that's where we start first. And then we go from there. This is going to be decades long project. We're not going to get this done in a year or two. This is going to be ongoing, uh, probably for the rest of our lives. No matter how long we live, these, these Brick Streets are going to be here, uh, preferably forever. Uh, I don't know if we'll save on, we've got almost thirty blocks of Brick Streets right now and they're estimated at four hundred and forty thousand per block in today's terms. And again, inflation with wages going up or whatever, who knows what it'll be by the time we get to that point. But this will start that process moving forward. This will be a dedicated source of funding for those Brick Streets. So, and anyway, the role of the council is to pass a resolution so it gets on the ballot in November. They, they want ninety days, uh, a minimum to get, uh, that on the ballot. Uh, that's what the county clerk also always wants. That's what we're bringing it to you now, uh, rather than waiting till the fall because by then it's, it's probably too late to get it on the ballot. So, like I said, we talked about this for a long time and this is kind of the end of that process, but it'll, it's the most logical way to do, uh, funding here for the Brick Streets.
And we're working on our, your committee, utility committee is working on a communications plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, once we get this out, again, as elected officials, appointed officials, anybody can, so we cannot advocate one way or the other, uh, for the, the sales tax. Uh, we can give as much information as we can, but, um, and you talk about it all day long, but if somebody says, uh, you can't go out and campaign for it, let's put it that way. You can have an opinion about whatever, but you can't go out and, and tell people, hey, I'm for, you know, this and you should vote for, uh, the sales tax, whatever that, um, resolution number's going to be or whatever. You can't, you actually can't do that.
Like Main Street?
Yeah, and people who are not elected officials can obviously do that. And anybody, anybody else in the community can go ahead and advocate for or against, um, the sales tax. People are right to do that. So, so the role of the council is to say, okay, we want to put this in the hands of voters and do they, again, we got two guys, people, people who love Brick Streets and people who hate Brick Streets. So we'll find out if the lovers outnumber the haters or vice versa here. Uh, and there's one way to do that and that's after the election. And we'll put out as much information about this and, and how it works and why we're doing it and why we're doing it now and what all the other options are and how this will all unfold as much as possible. Uh, I want to beat people over the head and they'll get sick of it, but, uh, but anyway, we have to do something with the, the streets. There's just no other way around it. As we've noted, a lot of them are now sinking because of the base underneath and whatever. So we're patching those things in here and there, but as sooner or later, some of those streets just become undrivable. And the patching, and honestly, it looks a little better than I thought it would, but, uh, it's not great. It's not, we want to preserve the look of the Brick Streets and I think that's the whole point of all this, so.
So Glenn, um, let's talk about the mechanics of this. So sales tax increase.
Yep.
That sales tax is just going to land in the general fund. Are we going to create a separate?
No, you can create a separate fund.
So this half cent is going to be tracked?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
And so we can then, second question is, is, does it then require to be spent on Brick Streets if that's the way the ballot?
If you set up the fund to do that, yes, it would. Now, the ballot is a little open, um, and you really have to write it that way. Uh, actually, our bound counselor wrote this and, uh, you can't write it so specific. For whatever reason, the attorney general will reject them when they're really, because, uh, because I've been rejected when we went out, first pool I ever built here and they, and we had, well, that's for a pool. And I said, no, can't do that. Has to be for recreation and to include different things or whatever. So it does mention Brick Streets in the resolution, but as I say, it's just solely for.
So what I'm thinking about is the grants don't materialize and the amount of time it would take for half cent sales tax to generate even enough for a single city block.
Yeah.
We might at some point, you know, because by the time we'd, we'd save enough in that fund, we actually do anything, it'd be unusable. So versus restoration versus repair, I mean, maybe, maybe get to a point where we just got to repair that block, you know, like we have been in the past.
Yeah, and I think that's a good possibility. The other one is, uh, you know, this council or future councils could actually borrow against and bond that money too, because you have a steady source coming in. You could say, we're going to bond for, you know, three or four million dollars, just kind of, I'm not going to replace the discussion on that, what we just said, believe me, I don't want to do all that again. I think we're wearing Ben out here, but he's, he's hanging one of those here. But it could be another scenario like that. We're borrowing four million dollars to do the downtown because we, we, we don't want to wait anymore. Or if we're going to save Nine Street, we're going to, you know, we're going to, we're going to do that too, or not, or whatever. So there, there's some different algorithms you could go with that.
What we did with the sidewalks is we bonded that money. You had to have the cash to go apply for the grants. So we bonded a million dollars and then we used pieces of that million dollars to pair with all those grants. And that's how we were.
You had to bond it. Yeah, right, they have it for one block yourself.
All right, yeah, okay. Jerry's back.
I'm pretty sure you can't do that.
No, I'm pretty sure you can't do that. They won't want to do that.
That's their solar bricks.
Yeah, so, hey, there you go. I like that.
But that's good.
You start to go back.
Yeah, so you could do that for, uh, for grants or, uh, different things.
And no plan is on set this.
Uh, no, not as it's written. Um, you, you could do that and a lot of cities do. I, I usually advise against that because something like this, you know, they've been down over a hundred years and they're probably, if, if done right, there'll be another hundred years, but it's going to be such an ongoing project, it won't be over in twenty years. So then somebody else is going to have to vote on this again, which would be all right. I think they would do the right thing. But again, this is, this is a, I think, a forever deal. And because, you know, honestly, when they're all repaired again, you kind of go back to the first one, you start repairing those again. So it's, it's, it's an evergreen project. It just keeps on going. The bricks are, uh, are great. I think, you know, again, if you, if you love them, you do, uh, and you want a part of your town, but they always have to be repaired. Uh, they're, they're high maintenance, high cost, but they will last. I mean, the bricks will last forever. Um, and the other thing I think when you talk about, once we pass this, is, you know, uh, truck routes and other things to preserve the downtown. Because it won't make any sense to spend millions of dollars preserving your downtown and then have all the heavy traffic on it. And the Brick Streets were never made for that. They were literally made for horses and buggies and light vehicles that they first came out with, um, you know, a hundred years ago, they didn't have the eighteen wheelers. So, so we'll have to do something on that front too. So, but anyway, the, the task here and the role of the council is to say, we want voters to go out there and, and vote on this and they're going to tell us whether they value the streets or, or not. And, um, well, you know, they'll vote. So I think we'll get a lot of interest in this.
It'll be a lot of interest.
Yeah, people talk, I mean, again, we've been talking about it forever and I think the whole community's been talking about what to do with the streets forever. And if you drive around downtown or anywhere through town, you'll notice some of our streets are in good shape, some are not, and are very expensive to rebuild, so.
Do we need a motion on that?
We have to approve the resolution.
We have to approve the resolution now.
Brick Street Resolution? What's that?
Resolution, not a revolution.
Number two?
Uh-huh.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
It's not a revolution yet.
Number two, correct. Number two?
Yeah, number two, yeah.
I make a motion on Brick Street Resolution, it's carried on. Or however you want. Warranted? As a warrant.
To approve?
To approve.
Are you saying you want to move to approve the resolution? Like you said, raising the city sales?
I second that.
Is that what you're saying?
I second.
I'll second your motion.
So Scott ran Jerry's motion.
I read it back to you.
And Jerry agreed with that reading.
That's what you were saying, but I.
Put us on TikTok.
I wasn't.
It was moved by Jerry, seconded by Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jerry? All opposed, nay? Motion passes. Next item, Russ, annexation, one, four, four, nine.
Yes, this is ordinance one, four, four, nine. This is the annexation of a piece of property located on College Street. Um, so if you're on Lawrence Street and you pass by the primary center, college is running through there and it's the far west parcel at the end of that street. Uh, we currently serve, um, the, the structure that's there, the house that's there, um, with, you know, water and, and as well as electricity. They're on, they're on their own septic system, but the sewer is down to the end of that street. The individual that is requesting the annexation, um, is looking, you know, to develop it for single family housing. So currently there, there's, uh, fourteen point six acres of land that would be annexed into the city. This is one that was on the agenda back in May, but we didn't have the first one in June. So this is actually the second reading, um, so the council could take action on this if they see fit tonight.
Who owned that? Who owns it?
The individual, his name is, uh, Lucas Ingram is his name.
I think his dad lived.
So these are going to be all single family homes?
Is it? That, that's what it said, you know, that's what they're saying. You know, the next step in the process is that they've got to go through a rezone and preliminary plat, I mean, we're still ways, ways out.
Well, either way, people are going to live back here. Are they, is college going to be their only route or?
Well, see, if, if you, if you look at the, the GIS mapping, you can actually see where col, college would be one way. And then there's also like South Street.
Right.
That's kind of in that same general area. So that would be something that the in, engineers, um, you know, in their preliminary plat would be bringing back to like planning commissions.
Sure.
Uh, we'd kind of look and see, you know, the lot sizes and all those kinds of different things.
Say the density may change. I mean, I think you're alluding to upgrading or updating that road going in there. No, and I know our, our, our job is to just annex it or not, but, uh, I'm just, just asking.
So, so there's like a lot of what ifs.
Right.
On, on this whole project, but this is really the first step, um, you know, is, is to annex and one into the city limits first. And then, you know, we kind of go down the road and start answering a lot of, um, you know, the public's, you know, questions and concerns at that point.
Any other questions for Russ? Assistant. Thanks, Russ. I see my public in here, so. Staff wants to talk to this. All right. Council discussion? Yeah, this, I was just going to say, this is, this is why we are in red. This is what the program's for. Now I will enter can motion.
I move to approve this ordinance, annexing land into the city limits.
Second. You moved in second. Dylan?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Motion passes, five zero. Next item, bond sale. Again, you're back up.
Back up.
You know, next time, you've been coming with a leg brace or knee brace, you're going to come with a neck brace.
That's next. That's next. This morning, eleven o'clock, we took bids for one point five, almost just under one point six million in temporary notes. Two year temporary notes. Uh, we received two bids. Northland Securities was two point seven zero, uh, Commerce Bank was three point one two, uh, percent. Uh, we're recommending awarding the bid to Northland Securities with the lowest bid at two point seven zero six. Uh, both rates, well, actually, the two point seven was in line with, alignment with last Friday's, uh, rate structure we saw on the market, so we're not far off.
And Scott, I think we have both of those performance as well to one of the package. But, well, yeah.
Not one of the other ones?
Four percent is the one. Talk about this in the, uh, in the committee report. It's in your packet. It's in your packet. So the temporary note is for the 1.5.
Right.
Would you build, how you built this pro forma on three or three and a half?
I built the pro forma as far as amount of money for the construction.
Yes.
So the current estimate for the construction is 2.018. So only built here is 1.5 for temporary notes, with the ability to add more if we need to. The bulk of the remainder of that is going to come from tax credits. Obviously, we've got a little bit of donations we can use, or our desire to not use any of the donations and help let those go to operations as we need it.
So the question really is on line 24, we're looking at the community center. You guys are looking at, in your packet, that's the construction bond debt payment, starting in 2025. The question is, temporary notes get us there, what is this bond payment built on interest rates?
That's built on 5.5% interest.
Okay.
And that begins in the year that that starts.
That was my question, so it's actually 5.5.
5.5%.
Which is conservative.
Yeah. It's built on 5.5%. It's also built on four-year temporary notes, not just two and four.
Oh, so these.
So if we need to enroll these two temporary notes, again, depending on construction when we're ready, which is not unheard of, that's, but that also gets us down the road to where it's entirely funded by the quality of life sales.
So we want to talk about the whole pro forma here, or just this piece?
Well, might as well talk about them, don't you think?
Yeah, I think this is probably the biggest cost element here. You know, as we talked last time, we wanted to update this pro forma with newer information that we had when we first did this. And so if you look at that, really what's been updated here, and we can kind of go down through this, the sales tax, line 11, really was originally, if you remember, was 1%, very conservative, you know, growth year over year. And so, I don't know what the history is over the past four or five years, it's more in a.
Six to seven? Ben, is that correct? Sales tax pay over years?
It averages seven and a half.
So, so if you go off a recent history, you know, we're growing at seven plus percent. So what this pro forma shows is only a 4% plus, it's again, conservative over, you know, recent history, which is the way you want to plan this stuff. And then, you know, it shows the sales tax credits and the campaign donations, you know, that's stayed the same. So really what you're looking at is the bond payment that Ben just talked about, built in at 5.5%, so that $137,593 payment is based on, you know, 5, 5, 5.5% interest rate. If it's lower than that, that payment will go down, or be less. The other things we changed, based on data, really was just the wages, you know, we talked about two part-time people running this, and we had built in, I think, $12 an hour.
Well.
Originally.
Yeah, the original was around $13 an hour.
13, yeah, 6.
Talking to Glenn and going back to the drawing board, we built in $20 an hour, that was 41,000, we rounded it up to 50,000, as far as operations concerned, so it gives us some cushion.
So the starting point is 20, $20 an hour, which, you know, based on what Glenn knows in the market, that's probably what it's going to be. And then there's growth, I think we added 2% growth year over year on that. Utilities is a guess, 1% growth, you know, the custodial maintenance, those are also, you know, estimates by staff. So net-net of all this, really what you want to look at is, on this pro forma, is you've got your total uses, which to me is a difficult term to say, so basically your costs are on line 28. I think I'm getting that right. So your operation on, so let me back up here. So the line we need to pay attention to is line 30, which is, to sum it up, is the net of what it costs us to run it versus the revenues. From sales tax, from, from, what's the other one? Just programming, by the way, program, we estimated 15,000, which, you know, could be a very conservative number. So line 30 is really the cash flow line for this, for this operation. So if you look at this, what you see is that we're cash flow positive until 2025, and then, actually, our expenses are more than our revenues generated based on these assumptions. But, which, that's important, but the real important number is the ending cash balance on 33. So this will be run, I assume, as its own fund. We talked about the Sullivan Square maybe making its own fund so we could track it. I would think the same would need to be done here, so we can track it. So the fund balance on line 33 is really how much the city has, would have as a community center fund. As you can see, it never goes negative, right? Even though your cash balance goes negative, based on where you start, with what we have, you know, in the starting point, we never go negative, and then at some point, so I think the lowest point is, what year?
2033.
2033 on line 33. Yeah, it's about 200.
68.
2034, 263,000. And then it starts creeping back up. So as a fund, you know, you always look at the cash balance, you know, where are you at at the end of the year, and this is projected to really never get below a quarter million dollars, based on all these assumptions. So we can tweak the assumptions, and it will change those numbers, but, you know, shared with you to, you make your own assessment on, are these conservative assumptions or not, because this really kind of is the viability of this operation going forward.
Well, I'm kind of confused. You were doing it by line, but I didn't. Is this the same thing?
Yeah, you don't have line signatures. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So.
But my question is, for the.
Ending cash balance is what I was ending up talking about, from a fund perspective.
Right.
And you're not even, I don't think you better write one out here. That's the original. I think the one you want is the 4%. You can look at the other one.
Okay.
So with the 4% sales tax and everything I talked about, it's ending cash balance is this one right here, by year. And the low point is 2034. And if you open that up and exhale, it'll show differently, it'll show the lines.
I didn't see this.
So I think we put them both in the packet, right?
They're in the packet.
Right. Just make sure you open them up. So that might be the original 1%. The one above the 4% right there. Those are the new assumptions. With sales tax, with the 5, 5.5% bond, and with the wage to $20.
Okay, so I have a question about, the bid came in at 1.5 for doing the construction and everything, is that right?
No, we haven't got the final bid. This is the temporary, this is saying that we're projecting, hoping that it's going to be around 1.5. So we have that money waiting, and then depending on how that bid, or what we call value engineering, which is just cutting back things that were going to the building, and trying to get it down to that number. But this bond only gives the authority to spend up to 1.5.
Right.
So if it came in at 2.6?
We could do nothing. We'd have to go back and vote. Yeah. Or try, try and bring it down to 1.5.
And.
With some missing it.
So when would that be paid off?
Two years. Yeah, you're talking about the temporary note we just issued.
Right.
Yeah, so that.
Whatever the bid comes in to have it done.
Final mod is 20 years.
Right.
This temporary note tonight is a two-year, just two-year loan.
So you have a construction loan. The long-term loan's going to occur when the community center is done. And that'll start when the community center is done and open, then it'll go long-term for 20 years.
So if the bid comes in high, and we want to carry on what we've got, right? I mean, it could come down to being pretty much empty built.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we spent 1.5 million on.
You have to make the decision to.
Yeah. We, as we talk about those notes, and if we do the bond, we'll have payments on it until, you know, worst case scenario is like, we can't do any more than you pay it back, and you're out with those interest payments for the months that you have.
That's what it works, worst case, and I know from a financial management standpoint, what we do is if the bid came back higher, which I would all, I expect today, in weeks, it went up a million, but I would expect costs to go up, right, from when this was issued. So if that happens, we gauge on what went up, then we go back and look at what other sources can help fund the issue for a long-term issue at that level. So what the objective here was, was to have the quality of life sales tax fund funded all by itself, with no help from any other fund, like street CIP or the sales tax CIP, no general fund, nothing else. What we do is, Glenn and I will go back and take a look at what other sources would be available, whether it's a debt service fund, may have some bonds coming off that we can use in capacity for, and we divert those over to help support that. That way you've got what you're anticipating you're wanting, instead of having the value of engineering down. That's the first thing we'll do. If that's just not flat, not possible, that's when we come back to you guys and say, okay, here's what you can afford. But it's not unusual to have a 1.5, or have a temporary note for a portion of the cost, and go out to get the formal bids, have those come back, and then lay out the complete plan. What we've got here is the 1.5 plus the 400,000 in tax credits. That's what we've got right now as a source. If it comes up above that, then we'll come back to the drawing board and see what else we can throw into there, especially as cash. Because you've also, remember, you've also got to use, you've got your ARPA money that's sitting out there, and we just got the second payment in. There's 700,000 or 600,000 ARPA money sitting out there, you can use a portion of that if we needed to. There's several options you've got. Our goal was to make sure that, to start with just quality of life sales tax by itself, funding the whole thing. That was our first goal. Does that make sense?
So if the bids do come back higher, do you come back to us first before you start trying to pull money from every?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions for Ben on this agenda item? Ben?
No.
Further council discussion? Not, I will enter a motion.
I move we approve the temporary note from, what's the name of the bank again?
Ben, what's the name of the bank? What was it, Commerce, was it 11?
Northland Securities.
What did I say? Northland Securities, thank you.
Thank you. Approve the note from Northland Securities.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, name? Motion passes. Next, new business, Douglas County Emergency Management Board reappointment. Glenn?
Wait a second, where are we here? We're on.
Reappointing the our representative to the Douglas County Emergency Management.
Oh, yeah, that's, we've brought for a number of years, wants to accept that again, on emergency management position, he's filled that role for a while now, so, so it's just a reappointment.
Any questions for Glenn on this agenda item? Not, I will enter a motion.
I move to approve Rob Colley as our emergency management representative for Baldwin City.
Second. Moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, name? Motion passes. Next, conditional use permit, Russ.
All right, so we've got a conditional use permit that has went through Planning Commission. It's for the address of 902 Seventh Street, which is actually just due south here, there's the Red Barn, and then it's the house right there on that corner. They petition to the Planning Commission to be able to have a commercial kitchen in their backyard, is what they're petitioning for. The Planning Commission did approve it, you know, with some, you know, stipulations that they got to follow, you know, the zonings and the setbacks and the different things. The size of the commercial kitchen would not be very big per se. The folks that live there currently do like caterings for like 100 people, maybe 150 tops. It would just be, you know, for their catering business, there's not going to be people coming and going, it's just the individual, and maybe like one, I think they've got like one person that kind of helps them from time to time. So what they are is they're, you know, they filled out the, went through the Planning Commission, it was approved through the Planning Commission, and then, you know, gets turned into an ordinance, and this will be actually the first reading of this. So I'm here to answer kind of any questions, or if you all might have.
So this will be an ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for us on this conditional use permit ordinance?
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Any further council discussion comments on this agenda item?
Give a motion up.
It's an ordinance, so it's first read. All right, we'll move on. KMG A Board of Directors appointment, Glenn?
Yeah, KMG A is Kansas Municipal Gas, both Rob and I are serving down that. Board of Directors, I've both had for a long time, so these are reappointments to our current positions on the board.
Any council discussion on this agenda? Not, I'll turn.
I move to appoint Glenn Roden and Rob Colley to the KMG A Board of Directors.
Second. Moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, name? Motion passes. Council committee report budget funding, Scott?
I think we already discussed the big one. You know, there's also some discussion that will come up in the budget work session around, you know, reserve funds and where we're currently at in a plan, you know, we need to come up with a plan to get to where we want to get to. So there's this discussion around that. I think we'll, again, meet, hopefully Thursday, if I'm incorrect, but it would be one more time to try to get things in a form that's easily digestible for the budget work session next Tuesday. I think that's all we talked about last time. Next meeting is Thursday, if everybody can make it, 7:45, this Thursday.
Does that work for you, Glenn?
Yeah, that's smarter.
I think the only thing we have is at 9 o'clock meeting after that.
Correct. That's the 23rd.
23rd, 23rd is the.
Finance committee.
That's finance, so the work session is.
Work session is 28.
28.
At 7 o'clock, and the work session is, is that?
Law enforcement center.
Oh, is that the law enforcement center? I'm sorry.
That is at what time?
7 o'clock.
The work session.
Yep.
Where, here?
Law enforcement center, Police Department. You developed, Cory?
We have not met since last meeting, we meet on the 27th.
With safety, Susan?
We did not meet this last month, situation pop-up, and are scheduled to meet in July on the 12th, and I thought the ordinance for the side-by-sides was going to be on this, it's not on the agenda.
It was, we hadn't pulled, it wasn't quite ready yet, so if you can, in the next two weeks before that meeting, because we were planning on having the first reading in that, just if you guys want to review it before that meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, work session on 12 too, right?
Yes.
I will.
If you look, yeah, look and see if it's.
Yeah, okay.
Public Works and Utilities, Julie?
Yeah, well, I won't go over the generation stuff if you want.
Thank you. We only had an hour and a half of that.
The fiber project is moving forward to hook up the collectors at the water towers to City Hall, we've been having a lot of problems with that, because it was an antenna-based system, so that should help alleviate a lot of the problems. The county's working with us to update the GIS maps, and they're offering to internal our data at no cost. Rob has applied for a grant that will provide us hopefully with money to possibly hire an engineering firm to help with the EPA, KTHE, lead service line inventory rule, which is due by October 2024. At this time, I'd like to give recognition to Chris Croucher for all his hard work and expertise that he's given to Baldwin City for the last 27 years, who will be missed, and also to Russ for his expertise that he's had all this time, for the past year. They will both be celebrating their final day next Friday, or next, no, this Thursday, this Thursday.
Can you get us those updated numbers and projections prior to your departure?
I just texted Tom. As soon as possible.
And our next meeting is July 14th at 9 o'clock.
All right, Kiki, Glenn, Scott?
Yeah, we did have a meeting, we continued to discuss really format, around how do we get, you know, what we've generated so far into a format that is more understandable, a lot of, obviously a lot of discussion and conversation around that. You know, the intent is to potentially bring back kind of straw man pieces at council meetings going forward, at the right time when they're not so long agendas, where we can have some discussion around it, with the goal of having, you know, work sessions after we get through the budget season, to kind of formalize a final strategic plan by the end of the year as a council, so. I don't think we're in a position now to share kind of what our thought process is, because we've still got a lot of ideas flying around, but we want to bring some options forward. In a council meeting, we have discussions, give guidance back to the committee, and go back in and try to get into a form, bring it to a work session, hammer it out, and publish it. So I don't think we have a next meeting scheduled yet. I know we're trying to add a citizen community member to the committee, and that's.
I know we're trying to add a citizen community member to the committee and that's near term, I think. That's, that's the best. Anything you want to add?
So you men for staff comments, anything more?
Uh, nothing more to add.
All right. Counsel comments?
Um, I was wondering, since the Fourth of July is almost here, did we ever go over hours and stuff like that on, we talked about that after the Fourth of July last year.
We did. Um, we're gonna, I don't know, just kind of talked about it a little bit and I think at this point, the decision was kind of made in committee, just leave it as is for now and kind of see how it continues to play out with citizens. There was, I know we have every year, we have complaints about, you know, the noise and stuff. And then we also have people that really like it. So it's kind of that balance of, you know, where do we, we refine ourselves. And that's, you know, honestly, when we changed that ordinance a few years ago, we found ourselves in that same situation, that, that discussion. I mean, you know, at that time, there's only four days and it never landed on a weekend and people were complaining that they never got to celebrate on a weekend. So that's when we just changed it to, kind of kicked that around a little bit more committee. It started off, it happens on public safety, then CDC for a little bit, we, yeah, ended up deciding, I think, to hands off bid. I do admit that when I saw the tents go up like five days ago, I was like, holy cow. Then I remembered that they were going up for a little bit. So I think after this season, we'll probably take another look at it, see what our community feedback is.
Do you want to make a motion? Do you need unlimited motions here?
The only comment I have is, I don't know if we discussed this because it's been a while since we've all met, so I just want to bring it up, that our buyer did back out of that lot, the old motel lot, so I can't remember.
Where?
Old motel lot.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he decided, or his tenant decided that that wasn't the best spot, right Glenn? You've been
That's correct. They're looking back at another spot on the highway that we don't know. So go back to where they originally wanted to go. That's all the communication I got from them, so.
It took us two months to hear from
Yes.
Well, that'll need to be part of the discussion next, next thing, because I think there are some works in for that lot, but I don't know where that all sits either, so.
Yeah, let's go back and revisit all of that.
Substation, we talked about that.
I thought we picked that.
I don't think we ever
It's conditional on the
Depending on this thing that just fell through.
So wait, did that, did, did the substation have any impact on them pulling out or not?
No, no, they were perfectly fine with it. So they should be at either vocation actually, either lot. That, that was not even a consideration for them. They actually brought it up, I think, when we talked to them before we even brought it up. They, they were already aware of it, so obviously they're watching our council meetings or whatever. So they said they had no issue with that at all and that's not, they, they just wanted to go back to, I guess, the original place they looked at here for whatever reason. And that's, you know, that's the way it goes.
Is there any consideration on Jackie's lot for the city to purchase that?
Well, we kind of haven't talked to her. When they started talking to her, because we're like, well, we're going to back off because this is a private matter. So we haven't, Glenn, I don't know, we haven't talked to Jackie anymore, right?
Yeah, it's been a while. They reached, I mean, again, the, the folks are interested in purchasing, they reached an impasse. She wasn't comfortable with the, with the way this was going to go because she felt like she had to evict before they actually would commit and she didn't want to do that. Remove her tenants and then have them back out, which they just did with us. So she didn't want to be in that position where she would move in. So I think their negotiations stalled actually a little before ours did. So I don't think they're interested in her property either as well as ours. So, but we have not talked with her since that time because we had a private sector, you know, organization looking at her property. We didn't really want to compete, but we could go back and I'm, I'm sure she can be willing to talk to us again about that land if that's what we wanted.
Chris, I just thought of this, but I, did we ever look at our lot on 56 that we've been trying to sell forever, right next to the creek?
You, that, there was a water issue there, I didn't leave.
Couldn't fill it up, fill it up and use that lot, because I do know that there's some flood zone on that lot, but I think it's only on the east half of the lot.
Well, there was also the issue that it would be visible from the road, which you all didn't want, so.
Correct, but on the other lot it would be also. So we were talking about doing some good screening around it. I'm just thinking of a cheap lot that the city already owns, it's not huge. It's right by the old dinner bill, tree.
That'd have to be looked into further.
I just, sorry, I literally just thought about that lot because I know we've been trying to sell it for quite a while. That might be a good location to ask.
Would you need to make a park out of it?
Huh?
Would you need to make a park out of it for the kids over there?
I mean, we could. You can always make a park out of anything.
Aren't there little kids and stuff along the trailer park line around there?
I'm sure, I have no idea. Okay, I was just asking. They could be looking to further. All right. If you commit to the substation right now, I'll look into it.
Of course, like, how can you commit to it when you know where it's going? That's tough.
We'll do, we'll do that spot. I mean
Oh, commit to it on that spot? And we're done.
So easy. I'm with you. All right, I'll entertain a motion, Jerry.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Right across the road from me, this cable company has come out of their box, laying the cable in the ditch and run it through the tube or into the driveway, across the sidewalk and into a guy's yard. I thought they were supposed to be burying them then.
Well, they're, I think, Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, they're, they're under the federal government. We don't have an ordinance that requires them to bury anything.
We don't have any jurisdiction over They are, they've got several crews in town. We get the 10, 12 locates a day for burying drops. I know, I know they are, hopefully that's just temporary. I've seen it, I know which ones you're talking about, Jerry. It needs to be buried, absolutely. Well, if somebody, if some of the old people come down here and walk stumble over that wire, who's liable? It's a tripping hazard, absolutely it is. And I'm, I'm still getting complaints. I get them, it seems like every other day about them parking their vehicles over there.
They only drink coffee every other day.
Huh?
They only drink coffee every other day.
No, I drink coffee every day, but they forget about one day. Make into consideration the age group, which I'm making a motion for, Jerry.
Second. Just taking it, all in favor say aye. Opposed, nay.